Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, excuse me, August 1st, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. And if we could do roll call, please.
Acting Chair Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Okay, next, need to get an approval of our minutes from the June 20th meeting. A while ago. Anybody want to make a motion?
I wasn't here.
Who's the voting member out of Alex and myself?
Tonight, I believe it would be both, yes.
There's two people missing?
That's right.
Oh, okay, sorry. Then I move we approve the June 20th minutes.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Beck?
Abstain.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Acting Chair Tisdale?
Yes. Okay. At this time, start with Megan. If we could, any committee member reports or anybody's had any activity lately?
Yeah, well, I look forward to hearing an update on the methadone clinic, so I'm hoping Alan will update us on when that will appear next, on the next agenda. And then, I received some citizen input that tonight's the night out against crime, and so it may not be the best time for a meeting, not just for the commissioners, but also for the public to be involved. So if we can keep that in mind for future years, it's always the first Tuesday in August. And that's the end of my report.
I have nothing to report, other than I'm back from about two and a half weeks of service with my reserve unit, where I lived in a city of tents and got to, you know, learn about urban planning on the tent scale.
No report.
No report.
No report.
One item that I do have to report is that I had a conversation with Alan, and I had an idea about, that I'd like to float to the Planning Commission, and that is the notion that we entertain the idea of a design review board in the city of Everett. We don't have one, and that's just something I'd like to discuss at the appropriate time. So maybe at the end, you know, of business or whenever it would be appropriate, maybe, I don't know, in relation to the metro plan, possibly, but, you know, that's something that I'd like to introduce to, for discussion.
Yeah, we can talk about that either in the context of metro, although it's really probably better, maybe under other business. I've got also response from Megan under other business tonight, too.
Okay, thank you. I've been a little bit busy. Smith Street, there's a group down there that's working the homeless issue, and there's been a lot of good stuff go on. It's not quite as bad as a sign coming into Broadway may have said, but sometimes, a little bit at a time doesn't satisfy some folk, so, but generally, that area's doing a lot better. Everett Station, we've had some good movement there with the Everett Station Alliance, and the other thing I did is took three days and walked the streets. I talked about 18 different folks, different businesses, about parking and what they would like to see in parking, and that was an interesting exercise. And that's about it. So, moving right down the agenda. David? Alan, you're?
For staff comments, we'll just reserve comments until we get to other business, but we also have opportunity for citizen comments for non-agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry, I blew past that. Are there any folks that are in the audience that would like to speak on something that isn't on the agenda tonight? Yes, if you come forward. Kathy will give you a little piece of paper, and you can fill that out, just your name and address.
Are you, yeah. I've got her.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
My name is Linda Browning, and I have a hair salon at 2827 Wetmore, right down the street from where Funko is going in. We have two people that park on that street every single day, 24 hours a day, with a handicap placard. I spent four hours last Thursday being shuffled from office to office, all around Everett, trying to solve this problem. They referred me to you. I tried to see you last Thursday, but couldn't get in. So I want to know, is there any way, we normally have 22 parking spaces on that street. Funko has shut down 12. That leaves us 10. And then we have two people that park there all the time, so that leaves us eight. So we've gone from 22 to eight. If people can't park, they can't spend their money. If they can't spend their money at my place, I mean, parking for me is critical, and we've gone back and forth with Funko. They're semi-cooperative, I've had to involve the city a couple of times, but I want to know what we can do about people that have handicap placards that park there every single day, all day, all weekend, all night. Got any ideas?
And this is not something that typically the Planning Commission deals with on-street parking, but if I can talk with you, I'll give you a call tomorrow if you have your contact information, if you've given that to Kathy, and we'll figure out.
Well, they told me that you make the decision whether a suggestion was made that a sign go up underneath the 90-minute parking that says handicap maximum four hours, and they said you guys decide that kind of stuff.
It's not the Planning Commission that does that, but I'll talk with you.
Well, nobody knows, I mean, there's so many layers of bureaucracy, it's amazing. I mean, I went seven, no, you got to go there, oh, you got to go there, you got to go there. Is there a solution? It's a problem.
I can talk with you tomorrow about that, okay? Does Kathy have your phone number, contact information?
No, but I'll give you that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for coming here, and sorry you got pushed and shoved around, but parking is, like I said in my comments, it's definitely, it's definitely on people's mind. Okay, hearing, no others? Okay, all right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know some people from you anyway. I was speaking about same, we have problems in downtown for the people parking all week, no move the cars. I understand the handicaps have, can park in any hours they want to, but my suggestion is they can park in, first of all, in downtown business zone, take out our customers parking. And I'm not against for the handicap, but I think that people parking in front of my place and in front of her place, and they leave one block down in Rackafala in the Commerce Building. I walked the other day on Rackafala, the corner, Rackafala, and you have handicap, four hours, nobody's parking there. I look on the other side, four cars, handicap, parking there all day, all night. I wish the city can do something. I can give recommendation, my recommendation is that people parking one day, all day, move the car, cannot park in same block for week, can park in one block way. Because we're a small business, we have to do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan, you?
Again, I'll get in touch with both of the business owners after I have a chance to talk with our parking enforcement people and traffic engineering.
I'm not that lucky. Okay. Now, Alan.
Okay.
He just about Metro.
Yeah, I'm just going to turn it over to David here, he's already.
Okay. All right, good evening, David Stellheim, Long Range Planning Manager. And so, tonight, we're going to walk through several topics. Part of the idea of, that we have with this is to kind of introduce some drafts of the chapters of the Metro Everett Plan to you as they're kind of coming out of the press, to kind of get your initial feedback, so that we can not overload you with one big document at once, and so that we can go through that. The first thing I like to do is remind people where Metro Everett is. Basically, I-5 to the railroad tracks, down south, Providence Hospital, Pacific Campus, down along Broadway, Brown Bear Car Wash, and up around the Everett High School is general boundaries, Everett Avenue being right in this location here. So tonight, I got three different topics, and so we'll cover all three, we'll just do one at a time, so that we can stop and pause and have a discussion, get any input that you'd like to receive on that. So we're going to look at draft vision statement, draft housing chapter, and a draft transportation chapter. The schedule that we have is a work in progress. The earlier schedule that we had, had dates that were a little bit more aggressive than this, and we keep on pushing it back a little bit, but right now, the current idea is that we're in the middle of the plan drafting, the summer and fall, we would go out for another round of public review. We had a very good turnout this summer, the beginning of the summer in June, we had over 70 people show up for an open house, thought it was pretty outstanding attendance. We'll go through that again, once we have a draft plan and some of the regulations, and get the public's input, and then come back, finalize draft plan and regulations, and start more of the legislative, more of the formal process, probably after the first of the year is what we would anticipate. So kind of the first quarter is kind of our goal for coming back to the Planning Commission with the hearing process, and then the City Council in the spring and summer. So the first topic for tonight is the draft vision statement. This is, of course, impossible to read there, but this is context for you, and really, just provided it because we don't really know yet what the City Council is going to do with this, I don't think they've made any decisions, but this is a vision statement from the Citizen Committee that just provided the report to the City Council, to the Mayor and City Council. So it's their vision, and so we don't really know the correlation to what we're doing here yet, but I thought it was important to kind of have that, because it reflected, I think, at least six months' worth of work of Citizen Committee doing this stuff, and so they have a nice vision statement as part of that. And, oh, and by the way, in your document, the vision stuff is at the very end of the documents, we're going from the back to the beginning, so, in your printed version of this stuff. But in the draft vision, we basically have a couple different topics that we have, and just kind of do the bullet points, and this is really based on some of the public input that we've had for the last year and a half, going through the process. And so, first is that the Metro Everett area be attractive, clean, and safe place, look at public gathering spaces, that it be a diverse and eclectic neighborhood, that it has energy and vitality, we celebrate and recognize and protect Everett's history and historic resources, that it has a vibrant character, we have multiple transportation options, and that we have a civic and cultural center, and finally, that we have housing choices for all income levels. So those are kind of the main bullet points that we have heard from the public so far in the discussions with the Planning Commission. So we've kind of written them up as just very kind of focused bullet points, rather than a long narrative, to kind of get to the major themes, and so with that, I will stop and have any questions or discussions with you.
My only comment is to simplify. I know that this was five minutes in the making with, I think, 20 people, but for the Metro Plan, if it's going to have its own vision statement, I would suggest it being a little bit narrower and more specific, to the point. This is great, but it kind of is like, pretty meaty.
Was there a survey, a public survey that also went out?
There's been several surveys that we have done, yeah, so we've done them at different stages of the process.
Okay, and it's mostly a convenience survey, is it, would you consider it statistically robust, or has it just been like, put out on Facebook and?
Yeah, Facebook, and at the public meetings, and website, things like that, so statistically, no, it's really somewhat more reflective of those people that are interested in engaging, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Could you bring the map back up, please, David? So the, I'm down on the waterfront. The black line there, I just, that gets pretty close to rail, and, you know, with the port expanding and bringing more activity, and we don't know what's going to happen with That line seems kind of close to me. So the line that we have, actually, working on this, this was an earlier line, the intention actually is the line that's up on the, as I say, the bluff, the shorter bluff up here, but the main line that goes to the tunnel. Really, the intention of the Metro Everett is just the property on the other side of Bond Street, and so that's where we're there, oops, with that, so certainly, as you drop down the hill, you know, 20 feet or something like that, then you are into major industrial area, without a doubt. I'm just wondering, why like, grand, or one of those, you know, that little chunk down there, you know, someone comes in and builds something there, five stories or whatever, residential, there's going to be noise and light and?
Well, first of all, we had a?
Yeah, the rail and all that.
First of all, we have to draw a line somewhere, and what we tried to do is use the, all the land that is east of the railroad right of way, within Metro, to be addressed within a plan, because it really, the railroad is a major separator between the industrial areas to the west, and the residential and business neighborhoods to the east. And so, while we have had some conversations with the port, and they've expressed some concerns about having an interface between residential and the industrial activity at the port, we have had quite a bit of conversations about what that means, what can we do about it? Everything from, gee, should we include that area, rezone that neighborhood, to industrial is one thought, or should we address it more in terms of providing information, notification to property owners or tenants that they are either buying or renting residential property that is within earshot of a working port? Or other things such as greater noise attenuation requirements in construction of future residential buildings in the area? And so, we recognize that there is an interface there, we do have a number of areas where you have that interface, and our codes don't have, well, especially with the lot patterns that we have in downtown Everett, 25-foot wide lots, 120-foot deep, don't give you a whole lot of room for using your lot, and establishing a buffer between other potentially incompatible uses. And so, we expect to have some ongoing discussions with the port concerning noise impacts or these other methods, similar to the airport issue that we addressed a couple of years ago with Conference of Plan update, where we had a Payne Field, kind of an impact area, where we required notice to, for any development, to the airport manager, and they would comment, and recording on the title documents of projects that are approved under that land use process, that they are within, you know, a noise impact area from Payne Field. We could do the same type of thing here with noise activity that results from the port terminal.
Well, yeah, I mean, we got the military, I don't know, you know, there were some restrictions on previous things that, you know, how close we can get, and how close they can be, and then you got the rail line going through there with, who knows what they're hauling, you know, that could be a potential problem, or the noise, and so I just wondered why we were going so close to rail and port and military.
Well, we've got a plan for all areas in the city. It just seems that we shouldn't leave a no-man's strip between the railroad and some other line for Metro without planning properly for that, and so, as I mentioned, you know, there are some things that we can address in the context of this plan for how you deal with properties that are located in close proximity to those uses. I have had also a conversation with a person from the Navy, they don't really have issues with noise impacts, they have other concerns, but we haven't gotten anything in writing from them yet, we've had a conversation on a couple of occasions, but their situation's a little bit different than the ports, just in terms of the noise.
So if I heard you, there will be, in that little chunk that's down there, if someone was to buy it, or someone was to rent it, they would be notified that this is Metro Everett?
We, only for future developments that would be building new housing, you know, we can't go back and record on the title of existing properties. We can provide notice and outreach, and the port does provide notice and outreach to some of their neighbors in that manner, without the land use process.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
My comment would be kind of the diametrical opposite of what Commissioner Tisdale remarked on, and that is that, it seems, you know, somehow, it's not counterintuitive, but there is no connection to the water with Metro Everett, and we're basically sliced off on one side by the railroad, and sliced off on the other side by the freeway, and historically, you know, before they had Everett Station on the other side of the downtown, it used to be down by the waterfront. And I, you know, to me, the sad thing about that, when the train station moved to the other side, kind of tore the heart out of the downtown, although, you know, it could be debated whether that was a good thing or a bad thing, but my question would be, has it ever, has the thought ever been entertained that there should be some sort of connection to the water? And that would entail getting across the railroad, or under it, or over it, or, you know, somehow making a connection. And I know you just rattled off a litany of technical reasons why, you know, that it could be problematic in terms of, you know, noise and the industrial activity and so forth, but, you know, it seems like, in sort of a historical context, there should be a connection to, you know, Port Gardner Bay. And so, I'm just, it's not a very exacting question, but I guess I would wonder if there couldn't somehow be a connection to the water at some point with the metro area. So that's kind of my, you know, I'm just kind of wondering out loud about that.
We do have some of that covered in our transportation chapter, we'll talk about later. Mark, down at the end of Hewitt? Right.
So, just building off what Commissioner Beck said and Jordison, one thing that came to mind for me was accessibility, so some of these bullet points in the draft vision could maybe be included under accessibility, like food options and green space, which aren't on there, but public gathering, transportation, civic and culture, and then also making sure that Metro Everett is accessible to the rest of the city, so it's in the transportation plan, but connection to Metro Everett. So maybe if the vision has something around the words accessibility, and includes food, green, public space, those things, and also making sure that Metro Everett is accessible.
David, are you going to address, because there was the access to the water at the south end of the port that got cut off because of the railroad, and they need to replace whatever that trussel is down there, you know, the access that the Port Gardner neighborhood was using? Is that addressed at all in our, I mean, I know it's outside technically of the Metro Plan, but that?
So, in both our open space, but also in our transportation section, we address that, we don't have any plans currently to provide physical access directly across, the anticipation is at the cost to do that, and then also, a place to land on the port property is not there to identify that location, so we're looking at a visual access at the end of Hewitt to develop a plaza, we presented those concept drawings to the Planning Commission quite a few months ago, but then also is to improve the bike and pedestrian connection along probably West Marineview Drive back to the bridge on Everett Avenue, so that we make a good pedestrian connection there, and California Street is designated as a bike lane connection, so there would be a bike lane that would get to West Marineview Drive, and then you'd be able to go to the north, to Everett Avenue, or up West Marineview Drive, so. There is some plans, not a bridge over the railroad tracks, we don't currently see that as being financially and physically viable at this point, but it's not to say that it couldn't be 100 years from now, so I, seriously, I mean, I did a bridge over the railroad tracks, and when actually, it was originally conceived in 1916, and they finally built it after the turn of the century, so it was like, 80 years later, it actually became a reality, so.
Well, and that's what I was going to ask, is there the possibility of just acknowledging that access, because the Port Gardner neighborhood, it's a really big deal for it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so even if, you know, there's not necessarily a solution, or, but just somewhere in the Metro Plan, it's recognized that there was this access point, and hopefully at some point in the future, there will be again.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a good thing, I think there's some interest in that, just whether, in the near term, we don't see a viable solution to that. Any other questions? Do I keep going? Okay. All right, well, now we can go back up to the top of the documents, the housing chapter, so, provide a little bit of background information, first off, for you. A few of the things in the graphs and charts that kind of give some context, and I know that we've walked through this before, but the one thing that, on the right-hand side is what is Metro Everett, and then the left-hand side is the city, and as you can see, it's a real distinct difference in the housing types between the city as a whole and Metro Everett. City as a whole, a lot of single-family detached homes, and very few in comparison in Metro Everett, and on the flip side is that a lot more of the multifamily housing development, so that's not too surprising, but it is a recognition of that. So that's not too surprising, but it is a recognition of that. Spend quite a bit of time talking about income and affordable housing. The current minimum wage is $11 per hour. People are paying the standard 30% of their income on housing costs. They can afford $572 if they work full-time for housing. Did a survey of available units earlier this summer, and the average rent that I found online was about $1,281, so roughly in the $1,300 range, which would take almost $25 per hour for someone to actually afford that unit within Metro Everett. As a result, the severe cost burden is there. Severe cost burden is those people that pay more than 50% of their income on housing costs. This really impacts those people that earn 30% of very median income or less. As you can see, and those are mostly renters, 4,470, and this is citywide. This isn't, we don't have availability of data on a micro scale in Metro Everett, but you see how many of the renters are paying more than 50% of their income on housing costs at the very low end. And that number starts dwindling at higher income levels, but we have a lot of people that are paying way more than they can afford for housing within the city as a whole. We look at the market analysis again, $1,281 was the average metro rent I found, which was about $1.80 per square foot comparison. King County rents are about 2 and 1/4 per square foot. It's one of the issues in terms of creating the demand in the market for people wanting to build housing within this area, is that the costs are not much different here compared to Seattle, but the rents aren't there at the same time. And so in order to attract more of the multifamily development, rents either need to be up higher or we have to, you know, something has to happen with some of the costs for construction. We did have a market study, market demand study that was done by Leland Consulting Group. They did both residential and office and employment, looking out 10 years. Their estimate was about 830 units of housing on the low end and 1,430 units on the high end. And just for comparison, the previous 10 years, we basically built about 1,000 units in Metro Everett. And so somewhere in that range is what they saw as being the market demand for Metro Everett. So the recommendations that we have are cover four categories, and I'll go through them a little bit more detail. First off is to increase housing supply for all incomes. Second is to talk about housing density. Third is to reduce housing costs. And fourth is to create a quality housing environment. So we look at increasing housing supply for all incomes. How to do that in our recommendations is, first off is to provide incentives. Second is to support new housing serving all income levels. And third is to support the additional low-income units within the community. So looking back at that graph I showed earlier about the severe housing cost burden and the distribution of housing within the area, came up with an estimate of looking at the market demand of how those housing units would fall across the different income spectrums. And so, again, a little bit under 1,000 units of income at 100% of area median income, and the other units being less than, at affordable from 80% of area median income down to the 30% or less of area median income. So we have a need for housing units at all income levels within the area. We look at housing density, recommendations is to establish some standards to ensure density. Some of those standards include ideas like minimum height and floor area, and then ensuring even higher density, potentially near light rail and the swift stations. So we want to make sure that we don't underbuild in these areas and we create that density within that. On the flip side is to prohibit detached, single-family homes, so we wouldn't allow single-family homes to be that housing choice style within Metro Everett is our recommendation. For reducing housing costs, we've recommended expanding the multifamily tax exemption area. This is a property tax exemption. Right now, it's almost all of Metro Everett, but it isn't all of Metro Everett. And so there are a few areas that's not included in there. And so we're, have recommended, and I know that we've talked about this in the past, but this is one of our recommendations. Parking is a huge cost of housing, so reducing off-street parking requirements for housing is a recommendation. Right now, transportation impact fees are reduced automatically 25% within the downtown area, but not within Everett Station. So adjacent to our transportation hub, they're not automatically reduced, but they are downtown. So we're recommending to expand that to all of Metro Everett to have an automatic 25% reduction. Then the last one is exempt or reduce low-income housing from impact fees and system charges. Right now, we do have on the books a recommendation or an ordinance that reduces impact fees for low-income housing, and Becky McQuarrie, I think, is working on ordinance right now with city council to reduce the system charges, and those are water and sewer connection charges that cost about $5,500 per unit. For quality housing, looking at additional open space that would be integrated into development. One of the sites that we see is potential redevelopment in the future, might not be till the end of this planning period, 20 years from now, near Everett Station is the Lowe site. Over 10 acres of property has the potential to create some open space as part of redevelopment there. And then again, we just mentioned this earlier, is public places, including the west end of Hewitt at the railroad track. And so we have some conceptual designs of developing a plaza and some open space there. Looking at placemaking within Metro Everett, things, for example, we're working on some things down in Everett Station, some things that hopefully we'll be announcing shortly about some new events that will be taking place in that area. And then lastly is to ensure the area is comfortable and inviting again for quality housing. So those are the main recommendations. There's a lot of details in each one of those, but I just wanted to cover the main points and open it up for questions and discussion.
Questions?
Just one aspect of reducing impact fees, David, the, there are school fees, are there not? Now, if you differentiate with apartment units, you know, you might have one type of fee for like a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom apartment, whereas for a studio apartment, you know, probably, maybe it wouldn't make sense to apply the same school fees per unit that you might, you know, just as an example. But, I mean, you can actually get down to the type of unit, dwelling unit that you're talking about, and sometimes there's a need to differentiate with, you know, school impact fees, traffic impact fees. And we don't have park fees, but, you know, that's another one.
And both Muckelteo and Everett School Districts actually don't charge impact fees on studios and one-bedroom units. So they only start at two-bedroom and above right now, so that's already in place. This recommendation on impact fees was only about the transportation impact fees. And again, they, currently, there's an automatic reduction of 25% in the downtown B3 zone, and so we're just recommending that we expand that to all of Metro Everett, because it's an area where we anticipate less traffic being produced, therefore, there's less impact and have an automatic reduction as part of that.
But we don't differentiate with studios, or, did you say Muckelteo did, or?
For schools, for school impact fees, both of the school districts, they don't have impact fees on studios and one-bedroom units.
Okay.
So it's zero, which is recognizing that those smaller units don't usually have children.
But in the metro area, we would, we make that distinction?
It's all of the city of Everett, the entire city is that.
Others?
I just have a quick clarification question. Can we go back to the increased supply for all, housing supply for all incomes, just a couple slides back?
Page?
That would be page 16. And I just wanted to make sure I'm tracking correctly. That's the projected need across the incomes going forward over the next 10 years, or is that current stock?
That's the projected need, so that's looking at the market demand and how many housing units. And so based on the income levels, that's how it would pencil out. So we've had some feedback of not having more low-income housing, for example, within Metro Everett, and clearly there's a need. And so this is a way of just showing that there's a need at all income levels within the area.
And just to double tap on a point that I saw earlier, the market demand projected over the next 10 years ranges from 830 units to 1,430 units. This is page 14. And that's reflective almost of the last 10 years as well, that was mentioned. So just, we're tracking on about the same growth rate as we had during the, like, the largest recession.
Actually, those, the 1,000 units were actually before the recession, so the recession kind of took a little lull.
Yeah.
So I was being actually kind, I think, in saying 10 years, so it's probably about 15 years.
So 15 years?
Including the recession, yeah.
Okay, so 15 years. Okay. Just out of curiosity. All right, thank you.
David, mine on that same page 16, when you talked about less fees, impact fees, and reduced water and sewer, which, which income level would that affect?
The reduced for, the reduced fees for, Becky, can you help me out? Do you remember impact fees? Is it on all income? I don't remember.
Connection charges.
Yeah. The connection charges right now, they're being drafted, are at 50% of area median income or below. So it's at the, so it...
514.
No, it's actually the 577 and the 480. So these, these two groups, so this is 50% and below, these two right here. So this is 50 to 80.
But it doesn't include 50, it's 50 and below.
It's 50 and below, yeah. So these two for the connection charges. I can't remember on impact fees if we went up to 80% or not. I don't recall what that ordinance said.
And do we have any data that shows, we talked about reduced parking in my new apartment building, and what happens to the spillover? Like some of the folks we're talking earlier, you know, if I don't provide it in mine, are we going to make the, are we going to make the street parking worse? I guess is what my questioning would be.
And that's something that we have to look at a little bit more holistically than just a code requirement for off-street parking within a particular type of land use. We also have to look at management of the on-street parking system, and that's something we've had our conversations with the traffic engineering department. The city engineer has been briefing the council periodically on parking in downtown. The strategy there is that if we are going to reduce our required off-street parking, that it would be based upon the characteristics of different tenant-type groups. So for example, low-income housing tenants tend to have less ownership of vehicles. Students have a lower vehicle ownership rate. Senior citizens have a lower vehicle ownership rate. The size of the unit, whether it's, say, a one-bedroom or studio unit versus a two- or three apartment, excuse me, two- or three-bedroom apartment unit would have a different, higher standard than some of the smaller types. So we're looking to tailor those parking requirements based upon tenancy and unit size. So, but then, on the other side of that, if, in order to create an environment in downtown that's welcoming also for the guests or customers of business, we need to have the on-street parking enforcement as an element of that. Ultimately, will that get into charging for on-street parking? That's a possibility, but not at this point. And that's something that's related, but it's not being directly addressed in the metro plan as far as establishing a pay for parking system on-street. And David, you may have some other folks or thoughts to add?
The other thing about the residential parking demand, so the, you can't get residential parking permits, but they're not eligible in commercial zoning districts. So you can do that in the residential zoning districts. You can park outside for extended periods of time. But as, as that, so when we talk about the transportation chapter, one of the things is to continuously evaluate that program, because the more that you reduce the parking and the more demand for that parking occurs, is that you may have to make adjustments to adjust behaviors as well. So just like what we heard tonight, as you start seeing things impacting businesses or other uses in the neighborhood, you need to make adjustments and accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
If I may just echo off of that, I really want to push an idea that this, you know, amongst other places where we could be rebuilding urban villages here in the city, but downtown is probably the most promising place that we can just push for people to live without cars. You don't need them. With a good transit, with good planning, it wouldn't matter how many parking spaces are in front of any business or in any building, because no one would use them. I went for almost over a decade of my life getting around without a car. It's doable, and it's something we should work towards. And so, you know, I understand the concerns, but I think we need to think maybe like a decade beyond, you know, what our current transportation situation is now, and think about, you know, Zip Cars, Cartigos, the transit, a rich transit ecosystem that supports a carless life.
Right, no, I understand that, but more ask the question around, you've got aunts and uncles and brothers and sisters and daycare people bringing people, you know, there's, that stuff's not going to disappear.
Who can all take transit. There's no reason a good transit system would preclude anybody from getting into downtown or anywhere in this city, and that's the goal and the instinct.
Unless you live in Snohomish or Marysville and you're coming into Everett and that system isn't there, so then your choice, I'm not saying you're wrong.
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely.
That's, I think, what, we have to make sure that we stagger it or stage it so that it, we don't hamper, because we know in your learning and your current expedition out knocking on doors, one of the things we need to do is raise the income level to help that downtown businesses thrive more, and so it's, I just want to make sure we have a conversation about doing it the right way as opposed to...
Absolutely, and I really applaud the word use of expedition. That's an excellent descriptor, so it's been an adventure.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Speaking to this chart again, if we have the information, and I don't know that you have it or that you can get it easily, but in the event that you do have or can get the information that allowed you to create that chart for the 1,000 units that we've added over the last decade or whatever, that might be...
Of what those income levels were?
Yes, how the new units are shaking out on that income chart.
Yeah, we would have to go and poll every of the households and figure that out.
Something you can get from permit data or from information, you can get from developers or managers of buildings that would help you with that. Because it might be, it might be instructive to compare how that distribution with the incentives that we have in place now.
And the only data that we have that relates to existing rents based upon individual households is in our multifamily property tax exemption for those projects that benefited by providing 20% of their housing units as affordable. They have to report annually what the incomes are of their tenants in those 20% of their units.
Okay.
It's, in some cases, they give us more data so that we might even have 100% of the units in the data, income data, but they're only required to provide us the income on those 20% of the units that are required to be affordable.
Got you, okay.
So it's not complete data set.
Okay.
Based on the rents of what we saw in the market study, I would say that, you know, most of them are affordable and about, somewhere right about in here, kind of thing. So I would anticipate that the incomes are, you know, from here up in general, other than the 20% that Alan just said, that, you know, some of those would fall to the left of that line. Becky just looked up the ordinance for the impact fees... Becky just looked up the ordinance for the impact fee reduction and it also is on 50% AMI or below for the transportation impact fees. So again, the, the city of looking at reduction for low-income housing for impact fees and system connection charges would affect this lower end here.
Thank you.
Is there, oh, sorry, Mr. God.
So on page eight of the draft, you know, I'll have to look at it, but under the kind of comfortable and looks inviting part, you have work to address vacant and blighted properties in Metro Everett. So I like how this brought in a number of different, like the vision plan and the Streets Initiative policies. So I'm wondering if you identified any policy solutions for better enforcement of blighted properties, particularly historic or historically significant buildings?
Yeah, well, we'll probably cover that a little bit more when we get to the land use chapter. But we've, we've looked at some, some things, you know, there are some things actually on the books right now that aren't, not all of us being implemented. But there are some other tools that we're, we're starting to take a look at. So things like community renewal areas and some other things to do for that. So, so we'll have a little bit more follow-up in probably the land use chapter on that.
Does it include like enforcement for the property owners?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think you're ready to move on.
Okay. We did get, Kathy, did you get that letter from Chris, commission members too? Okay. Yeah, so the Affordable Housing Alliance also sent a letter. They, we sent this out to some housing advocates and low-income housing advocates and stuff. And so we got some good review feedback from Chris Collier from the Affordable, AHA, Affordable Housing Alliance. AHA, so. Alliance for Housing Affordability, thank you. So that was good, good, good feedback and observations that he, he spent some good time on. So please get a chance to look at that. Okay, so transportation. So first off, kind of looking at a little bit the big picture. City street systems, as our engineers will classify the streets into major arterials and collector arterials. And so our major roadways carry a lot of traffic, Everett Avenue, Hewitt, Pacific for east-west corridors, north-south Broadway, Rucker and West Marine View Drive. But then also some of the minor or collector arterials being Colby, also coming down to Bond Street and some of the areas out here, Smith Avenue, also missed north-south the Maple Street connection here. So these are pretty important traffic generators within the community. We don't see much changes of that happening in the future. Similarly, the freight routes, very significant here, particularly the, the major freight routes coming from the south off of Rucker to 41st, or 41st to Rucker, down Pacific and West Marine View Drive, getting to the Port properties. Everett Avenue also being east-west connection and then Pacific Avenue and Broadway. All these has been pretty big freight quarters along with Maple as well. And so those are existing freight quarters. And again, seeing those. Everett Avenue is diminishing in freight. It used to be a designated freight quarter. I think the amount of freight going down that has, has dropped with the improvements to the, to the south coming off of Rucker to West Marine View Drive. Bike routes, we have the beginnings of bike route network that's coming in off of Hoyt, a little bit on California right now. Mostly bike lanes and then also some bike sidewalk paths along Smith Avenue and some things that are starting to get developed along the riverfront as well within close proximity to Metro Everett. We do have an existing bike master plan. And so we have identified several routes and improvements within here, including again, the major east-west corridor along California Street has been a major corridor going down Rucker that connects the north to the south, which actually also is plans to have connections to their inner urban trail. A bike sidewalk path along Broadway across the, the bridge connection that comes into Wall Street on the backside into Everett Station. And then some plans along Fulton Street to kind of get into Pacific Avenue as well. And then some, some routes from the north as part of the bike master plan. For transit coverage, we have Everett Transit Downtown have quite a bit of coverage within Metro Everett, good coverage. And then also major transportation hub of community transit and SWIFT lines that connect into Everett. So places north, south and east of here have good connections coming into Metro Everett. Transit and light rail plans, provided a little diagram. Right now Everett Transit's working on bus bulbs along Broadway. Quite a few of these, the next year and a half to two years will be put in along Broadway to have buses pull up and, and drop off. It actually reduces the impact on, on parking within the area so that buses stop in the lane of travel. Make some improvements within that area. And of course, you know about the light rail plans that right now are scheduled to get to Everett in the year 2036. That would extend the light rail from Linwood to Everett. Earlier, we talked about the issue of parking. This is a diagram that was used in the 2008 Downtown Parking Management Plan. It's a concept that parking managers use is that when you get to parking supply being 85% or more constrained supply is when it becomes kind of a red alert thing is that when people see that it's constrained by that amount, then people think there's no parking and they may move on to some other destination as a result. So the, the target in large measure is this area in the middle, the 70 to 84%. When you get actually less parking, some people think it's a dead area and so they don't go either. So they, people like to see the activity on the streets and, and parking, but they don't want to see it so constrained that it's an issue. And so the target has been within this zone. Downtown, some of the parking, and the parking plan that was done in 2008 and reviewed in 2016, really to address the issue is that there are areas that are hitting the 85%. But what they found is that, in fact, as you heard tonight, is that really there's quite a few people that are not following the rules. And so there's people that are employees and others that are either parking beyond the time limits or they're moving their cars. And so they're not actually following what the, what the rules are. And so one of the recommendations is increase enforcement. And I know that the city has hired additional enforcement folks and it continues to be one of the first priorities. Second recommendation was to do alternative travel modes, again, transportation options like transit, park, bicycling and walking modes, car shares, things like that, alternative travel modes to get people downtown. Affordable off-street parking, again, is finding those affordable off-street parking within garages or other spaces. And then the last, and Alan mentioned this earlier, is the, the idea of paid on-street parking. So one way to address the people that are parking for four hours or eight hours is actually charge them what, what it really costs for those spaces. And it may change their travel patterns. And so to look at paid on-street parking at some point. Our existing comprehensive plan, transportation element, really looks at an integrated system of all these. Is that land use kind of drives things, but we look at pedestrian bicycles, transit, freight with truck and delivery vehicles and autos. There were six basic goals, looking at multimodal design, maintenance, accommodates the land use plan, looks at the impacts of the transportation system, partnering with other jurisdictions and regional transit as being the solutions for transportation within the city as a whole. And all these things still really do apply into Metro Everett. So as we look at recommendations, several categories here. First off is light rail, second congestion, third transit options, fourth transportation demand management, next about freight, pedestrians and bicycles, and finally about parking. So when we look at light rail, recommendation is about station location. And I, I know that we've shared the designs with you and I'll, I'll walk through that again. But one of the things that we think that's really important with the location of the station is that it serves both downtown and Everett Station. So it'd be ideally situated to, to serve geographically the, the largest area within the Metro Everett. Concept that we have is to extend the Pacific Avenue Bridge. Right now it goes over the railroad tracks. Is to extend that bridge all the way up to Broadway. So there'd be a, a bridge. So it'd address some of the grade issues and create a transit mall underneath that. Pedestrian crossing of Broadway, again, Broadway is a, is an arterial. It's a, it's a freight delivery area. It's very difficult and it's a long time to, to stand and wait for the crossing of Broadway at times. I can tell you because I walk it two times a day, I, I cross it and sometimes I, I wait for a long time. And so if we're going to have light rail on one side of, of Broadway, is that the idea is to have a pedestrian crossing that doesn't have to, that can be a grade separated crossing of Broadway so that people can get across there. Recommendation is to have the parking for the station to be closer to I-5 so that we don't generate all the traffic where we're trying to create pedestrian activities. So put the parking closer to I-5. So as traffic comes, people come from other areas outside, we keep that traffic a little bit closer to the I-5 corridor and not where we want to have a pedestrian atmosphere. Then finally is to enhance the streetscape to make it a pleasant place as part of it. The light rail station concept plan that we have, give you orientation. This is Pacific Avenue right here. Here's the current Everett Station. Our recommendation is somewhere in this vicinity is to have the light rail station. Light rail will come in off of Broadway or McDougal or somewhere, some alignment that would come in. But again, this would help serve both downtown and Everett Station really well. Looking at pedestrian crossing of Broadway, somewhere here between Pacific and Hewitt, somewhere in there that would potentially take advantage of the light rail being elevated, coming off the light rail and going across into that area. Buses would come underneath the elevated Pacific Avenue down off a wall and onto McDougal. And so buses would come by, be able to drop people off to the light rail station or, and continue their, to their destination down to Everett Station. We recommend to have 32nd Street to be a good pedestrian oriented area with lots of green spaces, nice activity with a plaza within the, this area that creates some nice activity there. Our parking garage is on the east side of the railroad tracks, again, closer to I-5. And to have a connection so that people can come out of the garage. If they're going to light rail, they can just walk along Pacific Avenue and get to light rail there or they can come across into Everett Station as part of that. When you look at this in perspective, this is Pacific Avenue. This is light rail coming in right here and you have the potential pedestrian bridge coming across. This, oops, this one has it coming in off of Wall Street, right into the backside of Xfinity Arena within that. And you'd have the busway coming in underneath Pacific Avenue and then going into Everett Station within this location. And this would be where our parking garage is recommended. For congestion, we don't have really a lot of congestion within Metro Everett. There's sometimes some events that happen, I think, that causes some congestion along Hewitt Avenue and along Broadway. So really no real things other than supporting things on I-5 and US-2 for congestion relief so that we can get people on and off and through that so that they don't actually take a bypass through Metro Everett because they find I-5 congested. And also is to try to make sure that Broadway continues to move for high-capacity vehicles within that area. For transit recommendations, again, Everett Station being as a hub, looking at recommendations to increase transit frequency is one of the high, the issues that we hear a lot. And to support bus rapid transit corridors, we have them currently with a SWIFT. And then community transit down the road is looking at Broadway going to the north of being another bus rapid transit corridor. And so looking at Broadway coming down into Everett Station as a bus rapid transit. For transportation demand management, again, looking at transportation impact fees, reducing that to recognize that there's less impact but in, of cars, but in exchange, try to make sure that there actually is less vehicle traffic and so that we would have some transportation demand management or TDM measures that would be in place as part of that. Support car share and bike share programs, reduce parking so we don't generate that demand and also limit how much parking can be put in some places so that we don't have people putting in the maximum of parking and, and encouraging cars to be driving. For freight, looking at the 41st, Rucker, Pacific to West Marine View Corridor is a critical freight corridor. Everett Station we see is continuing to have some industrial character, particularly south of 33rd and 34th Street in that area. And so to recognize that freight will continue within that area. And then we kind of raised some issues also in the Burlington Northern Tunnel. There's some concern about the seismic conditions that may have some potential for failure of the tunnel. And so it's a pretty major issue not only for life safety, but also clearly for moving of freight within the community. Spent a lot of time on recommendations for pedestrian and bikes. Have quite a few things in here, including improving the path between the Everett Station and Xfinity Arena. Again, the Broadway crossing to get a grade separated crossing, connections between light rail and Everett Station. Have a weather protected walkway from the parking at the light rail, improving the Broadway streetscape. Right now it's not really pedestrian friendly, kind of, have a barren landscape. Recommendations for a wayfinding plan so people can find their ways throughout Metro Everett. There's quite a few missing sidewalk segments and some pretty critical corridors within Metro Everett. So completing those sidewalk segments. Looking at a, a connection across the Lowe's site for bikes and also potential pedestrians across there. Support implementation of the bike plan. One of the things that we've heard and part of the discussions at the Everett Station District Alliance is the idea of bike support facilities. So things like repair stations and comfort stations, lockers, things like that that can help support more bicycling. And then finally is, is, we were talking earlier about the access to the waterfront. So one of the things that would be a slight change in the potential bike plan is to, at the time the bike plan was done, the really redevelopment of the Lowe's property, which is here, wasn't seen as a possibility. You know, we still don't know if it's, will happen or not. But if it does happen, there's the ability to create the connection across that property that would give a little bit better access off of, from the north, but into Everett Station as part of that, rather than kind of a, a route that comes from the north and then it has to jog like this. And so trying to look at some connections that would come across that property. And it doesn't have to be a straight line. It can meander and go through. We're just drawing a connection between two streets, between California, connection across the Lowe's property to Pacific Avenue. Last, not least is parking, looking at recommendations that should reflect location again. Is reducing parking where we want to encourage more commerce, more pedestrian activity. Looking at adjustments for residential parking based on the size of the housing. Getting back to a little bit of the discussion earlier, the difference between a studio and one-bedroom versus a larger unit. There's clearly a correlation between parking demand as well, their household characteristics like income. Senior housing doesn't have, create as much parking demand as a regular market rate housing. create as much parking demand as regular market-rate housing, and development characteristics, and then looking at some innovative measures for parking, like parking stall substitution and shared parking. Mentioned this earlier about the residential permit parking zones, again, periodic evaluation, so as we look at reducing parking, we need to continually evaluate things. So we anticipate, just like the 85% for downtown, if this is spilling out into the residential neighborhoods, we have to monitor that and evaluate how that's going to make adjustments accordingly, and there's, there are some tools that are available for that. For Xfinity Arena parking, one of the ideas is to provide development incentives in exchange for off-street parking for events, so those projects that develop within like a quarter-mile of Xfinity Arena, if they provide off-street parking that's for events, is to provide them some development incentives, like increased heights. So to encourage some of the other ways of the private market to do some parking. But also, what we're seeing a little bit is, the potential is that there's no evening and weekend parking restrictions right by Xfinity Arena, and so those businesses that are more retail nature in that area, see people parking, and so there's no turnover of parking right around the arena, and so looking at some ways to potentially address that. And just like the last one is the residential permit parking zones, is the downtown parking management, is a constant evaluation, so as we see issues, is constantly evaluate the tools. The, the tools and the recommendations are there, it's just a matter of timing of when they need to be implemented, for example, the paid parking, at some point that's probably going to rise to the top, as being a potential need that's going to happen, so we have to continuously monitor that, and look at when the right time is to look at potentially implementing that. So with that...
Michael?
Yes, overall, I think that what you've done here so far is very commendable, I think the staff's done a great job. On the transportation element, one thing I'd encourage you to think about is, the way you've organized it so far is kind of by mode, transportation mode. I think it's worthwhile to consider thinking in terms of internal connections versus external connections. The, one of, to me, one of the challenges of our metro area is that it's big, it extends over a large area, the combination of distances and the topography of the area make it difficult to circulate within the metro area, and as we have more residents coming in to live here, their ability to get around the metro area and have it function as a nice vibrant multi-use area that we envision, is going to rely on being able to get around. It'd be nice if you didn't, if you lived in a unit off Colby, for instance, so you didn't have to get in your car and drive to the waterfront to drink, or something like that, it'd be nice if there were other options. I think the bikes is a good way, can be part of the solution, but I think there may be other things we need to look at, like transit connectors, or what have you, trolleys are probably too expensive for us, but maybe some kind of a bus rubber-tired kind of connector could work to help knit together the various pieces of our large extended metro area. I'm willing to bet, most people, if they think of central or downtown Everett, don't, the area that we've defined as our metro area, they would probably think of as three or four different areas. So knitting those together is, to me, a real challenge, and transportation is the way to do it, so. I think if you think in terms of internal versus external connections, because most of the transit that you've talked about is really geared to external connections, I think, and that's important, too, you've got to connect the metro area with the rest of the city and the region, but the internal connections, I think, deserve some attention as well.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Zelensky brings up a really good point, and I would suggest, look at the city of Boulder, they had a circulator that they developed, that kind of floats around the internal downtown area of Boulder, and when I was there, it was a huge success, but it just literally is kind of a smaller bus unit that goes from place to place, so.
Everett Transit has tried that from time to time, it's never really generated the ridership that it needs to keep it going, so they try it every now and then, but ridership has not been very robust.
Maybe it's just...
So, oh.
Something for the future, in terms of the density of the population and stuff.
I, oh.
I was going to say, I was a rider on that, when it was the four and the five, that were kind of circling downtown and going to the station, often I was the only person on the bus.
So your personal chauffeur?
At the time that I was going to the station to catch another form of transportation, to go to work.
Agreed, and it probably didn't work in years past, but I think what we're talking about is more density, more density, more density, and there's probably going to be more demand as a result of that, so.
Alex?
Oh, thank you, and I apologize for the interruption earlier. You know, one, one thing circling back to with regards to transit, is the ridership issue. One thing I'm curious about, because we're talking about internal mobility versus external mobility, where do, I mean, we know the commute times, but where does everyone go? I mean, if we're thinking about creating the transit ecosystem, we need to support the density we need, to support the circulator that we need, so it has the ridership we want, where, do we know where people in Metro Everett are going? I mean, you look at the commute times, you see 10 minutes, and you look at the methodology, about 10% of the people walk, and about 20 people, 20% of the folks have a less than 10-minute commute, that's good suggestion, that probably a far, a large majority of the people who are walking have a very relatively short commute, but when we're thinking about, you know, Metro Everett, and getting, moving people around in it, and build, and, you know, putting together transit policy and planning policy to encourage that, it helps to know where people are going, so we know which ones to prioritize, which ones to lean, which modality to lean into, which routes to lean into. So has there been any discussion around that, you know, emphasizing what's beginning to work now, or what are our primary modes of, and places of going, because, has there been any discussion around that?
That's a great topic, and unfortunately, you know, we're not the transit experts, if we had somebody from Everett Transit here, we could probably provide you a lot more information, they do a lot of O&amp;D studies, Orange and Destination studies, to try and figure out how to tailor their service to be the most effective serving the market. But it also changes from year to year, because of, you know, just changes in where people choose to live, where people work, and different transit services that are provided, you know, for example, sound transit, when, and community transit, right now, community transit has a, just a very robust service to downtown Seattle. When the light rail opens in Linwood, they're going to stop serving Seattle, they're going to serve the end of the line in Linwood, and so, you know, there's just continuous shifts and adjustments that the various transit systems make in order to respond to that market, but unfortunately, you don't have any transit experts at the table here, and we could, we could certainly, you know, have a discussion with our transit folks who are doing an update of the, their strategic plan.
I would love to have, you know, going for, especially for Metro Everett, because I think it'd be very critical to have the transit, Everett Transit here informing this conversation, I mean, when we're talking about parking, we're weighing, like, our conversations, about how many, what should be our parking requirement, how do we think about transit, how do we think about moving people, and so I just think that would be, you know, a critical piece of information to help us as we just, you know, weigh all our options and look at, you know, all the plans we're putting together.
Good comment.
Just one comment that I have, it's great that we have the master plan, bicycle master plan for Metro Everett, but it's really how it relates to the, and Commissioner Zelensky touched on this, but how it connects with the rest of the city seems to be a critical importance, because if you're riding a bicycle, certainly, I mean, and I, I think there was a greater master plan that was within the Parks and Recreation Department, or has that been completely within the planning department now?
There's a, there's a bicycle master plan, and it's incorporated into our overall plan, we just clipped out the portion that's in Metro Everett as part of that, so you're just seeing a snapshot of the overall plan.
Yeah, kind of a small segment, and there was a, an idea that it would be nice to be able to ride a bicycle all the way, completely around the peninsula, you know, of course, that's where the railroad is, so that's, that's kind of a problem, but...
Actually, you can do that for a great deal of the length, from West Marine View Drive around East Marine View Drive through East Grand Avenue, and all the way to Everett Station, back up into the Lowell Riverfront area, you can, it's a, it's not always direct, but it's been developed quite a bit over the last 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
I have a comment or question tied into your comments, because I know this is just for the metric, metro area, but I was looking at this master plan, and I was wondering how this California corridor was supposed to tie in to, for instance, the bike lane across the US-2 bridge, and I actually drove it today, kind of looking, you know, because that, the street that goes under the bridge is signed as a bicycle, one of those routes you were just describing, and so anyway, I was just wondering if that thought was to tie that in somehow to the, the system that goes outside the city.
Yeah, it's, that's definitely part of the concept, and the, apparently, the Department of Transportation oversubscribed the, their budget for the, the planning of the California route, I just found out yesterday from our city engineer, but they were supposed to start the design process for that, but that's part of the critical question of how, how do they make that connection to the Highway 2, but that's the whole idea, is to, to get out there, to make that regional connection as part of that, so that's definitely part of the goal, is not to just end it there, but to make that connection to the Highway 2.
And I also had a question about what a bicycle boulevard do.
Uh, yeah, I was trying to figure out how much to put on there, but bicycle boulevard is, is, is kind of like a shared lane, is the concept, so it's, it's, it's a wide, it's a wide traffic along with bike together, so it's a, I want to say it's...
Like Seattle's cyclo tracks? I mean, the cyclo tracks that are down on Mercer Street and West Lake?
Yeah, I don't think it's a cyclo track, but I want to say it's a, if I had a, I want to say it's a, it's, yeah, it's like a Cheryl, but it's like a 14-foot wide lane, so maybe even a little bit wider, so it's kind of a...
Dedicated, though?
No, I don't think it has a dedicated path, it's, it's, it's signed, but it's not like a bike lane, so a bike boulevard is, is basically a, it's a wide area with lower traffic volumes, it's kind of shared between the cars and the, and the bikes. I'm pretty sure I got that right, Neil, do you have any, have you looked at that anymore? I had to look that up, though, too, when I was looking at that, because they had a lot of bike boulevards designated, but if you look at the whole bicycle master plan, it's actually a very long document on, it's on our website, yeah, and so they have the drawings and show the examples of that.
Have you seen what the city of Bothell is doing?
I haven't.
Had a whole separate street, you know, with all sorts of landscaping and everything beside the main traffic, with, completely separated from the traffic.
Yeah.
It's really elaborate, only three or four blocks, but...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a concept that we actually heard some input at our open house about, but there's, I don't think the, the right-of-way or any of the plans so far have that as a dedicated route within the Metro Everett area, like that.
Alex?
Oh, I just want to departure a little bit from bikes for a second, the last two bullet points, car share and bike share, reduce parking and limit maximum parking, have other cities explored ways to, you know, to reduce the overall number of parking stalls by having the developer, more or less, take the brunt of, you know, making sure Zip Cars or Car, Ride Share, whatever Ride Share company has dedicated stalls in their, in their building? I mean, by and large, I use my car maybe two hours a day, if I'm really aggressively using it, which is about 10% of the time, and that's, so 90% of the time, it's idle, and we have parking, so we have parking stations, we have parking lots inside our building that are just not fully utilized, with, you know, vehicles that are underutilized, ride shares are more highly utilized, do we have any sort of, have any other cities explored, you know, reducing their overall number of parking stalls or parking requirements, and subbing in a, you know, ride share program as a, as a means to still allow mobility for their residents? Am I being clear, or am I, am I muddled?
No, they have, and so Tacoma, for example, will reduce the parking that's required if you have dedicated car share program as part of that. And again, you know, the idea of us reducing transportation impact fees is to have something in exchange for that, so people can have a menu of options, but ways to reduce that, and so they, you know, the idea is that you come in with a way of reducing the impacts on cars, and that could be one of the options that they do as well, as part of that.
So if I'm understanding, the 25% reduction in transportation impact fees, you, that's kind of, that's, right now, that's, is that the cap of the amount of transportation fees you could?
No, it's not a cap, it's just, it's a, it's a number that you are given without having to do consultant studies to show that your parking demand is even less than that, or your traffic demand is less than that.
Right.
So you can go below that, if, but you're going to have to have the studies that show your traffic demand's going to go below that, but this is just kind of an automatic, that's just an assumption within this area that you're going to get to that level.
Roger that, thank you.
On page 26, where you're talking about downtown transit, and I heard you loud and clear that you're not the, the transit guys, and when they, when you bring them in, I guess more the question here is, does this include the new, the three new connector buses that will move folks from riverfront to downtown to the waterfront and back?
Correct.
This, so that's already included?
Yes, yep.
It'd be good to have them discuss that with us, too, as one of the topics.
Yeah, and I think I, I'm pretty sure I have that covered in the, the overall transportation chapter, so the, the route is, has already been chosen, and so that will be, I can't remember.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Uh, no, it's not eighteen, I, I want to say at least 2019, if not, I want to say it's about three years out before, before that all happens.
That's not very far, it's...
Yeah, three years will be, in here.
The other question I had is, is, is the PUD substation that's down between 35th and 36th, and McDougal and Smith? I didn't see that on any of these maps, and I guess the reason for bringing that up is there's some requirements by them that you can't build too close to it, and there's some corporate situations, that was one of the major things why Budweiser moved out, the franchise, the contract between the two, the franchise Bud and the Folks. They're spending a lot of money down there and putting a lot of new toys and stuff that...
Definitely going to need more power capacity for the growth that's projected for Metro, and so that substation isn't going away, it'll only be used more intensively in the future, and the PUD's also looking at other sites within, like in the riverfront and in the port area for additional substations, so, yeah, they...
So that planning of expansion is...
We don't know of any plans to enlarge that, I think the, it's a fairly big space, I think they might utilize it more intensively with...
Right.
More equipment, but as far as the impacts on surrounding development, I don't have an answer for that.
That'll, okay, that was one of them, the other, that capacity will serve this downtown core with its increase in...
Yeah, and I don't have the specifics for which substations serve which areas, but the PUD does have plans for expansion...
Overall, they've got it taken care of.
And so we know that they're looking to, you know, expand in all of those areas where we expect a lot of growth.
Okay, thank you.
Just found the, page six of your transportation chapter, it talks about the waterfront to riverfront connection, and they do anticipate in 2019, so it, the 30-minute service, West Marine View Drive, east on Hewitt, south on Broadway, east on Pacific, the Everett Station, then continuing on Smith to 41st, then 41st to the planned retail at the riverfront, so every 30 minutes. Two years from now, electric buses.
Good. Any other questions?
Yes. So I understand that Broadway is kind of at the mercy of I-5, when I-5 is blocked up, then everybody takes Broadway, and so I was just wondering if you could elaborate on some of the thoughts of how to improve Broadway, and also, this idea of the bus bulb, then you have buses stopping in the lane...
Then you have buses stopping in the lane and how that that's a traffic impact. You're you're protecting parking, but you're impacting traffic. Is the overall plan more to, is that going to be bus rapid transit and therefore maybe will work better that way? And just what the overall plan is?
I think we're going to probably need the city engineer to come in and kind of talk about that. And I don't know that the idea of how the bus rapid transit would fit into that quarter were there yet. I think that's a two thousand twenty-six or maybe even beyond timeline, the community transit. It's, I think it's after the light rail gets to Linwood, when they start doing some of that stuff. I think that's part of the shifting of things. But I I I hear that and the same kind of questions are going through my mind about the buses stopping and the traffic and keeping that that going when I was kind of writing that. But I didn't follow up and with the question very much on that, but we'll follow up with that. But again, it is one of the issues is that recognizing it is a quarter no matter what. And so what we, you know, from a land use perspective, you know, what we want to do is try not to accelerate any of those problems either. So whatever we can do to kind of keep that traffic going through, because it is, no matter what, it still is going to be a real critical north-south. It carries a lot of vehicles down that road.
Part of the challenge for the transit buses is that if they, in the current practice where they pull out of the lane, they have difficulty getting back into the traffic lane. And so it's really designed to improve the time, timing for for transit movements. And so it does probably have an impact on vehicular traffic. That might be one way to discourage some of that bypass traffic coming off of I five.
I was wondering about that.
Any faster going on Broadway and and it'll increase the capacity for transit ridership because that'll be less delay for transit.
Right.
I think the load and offload is a lot quicker, too, with the bus bulbs rather than pulling in. So it's a it's a quick, quick turnaround there.
Alex?
Oh, out of curiosity, the, I mean, I like the bus bulbs. I've lived in cities where they had buses stop in the their street, people load on. I've seen it, it works really well. One thing, though, we've seen a lot throughout this entire document is place making. And is there any plans or conversation to kind of, you know, work with Everett Transit to utilize these bulbs, these to help with place making? What you're doing is you're creating more space between the vehicle and the front of a business, which makes it more inviting for individuals to go spend time there. So has there been any conversation to add art or the pocket parks around bus bulbs or take advantage of this new pedestrian space we're creating to help spur economic activity in certain areas?
Not that I'm aware of. I think we, that's a good point and we can follow up with Everett Transit on, you know, how they plan to improve those.
Alan, I, I'm going to say it was ten years or so ago. We knew that about twenty-five thousand, if I remember the number correct, residents, downtown residents leave to go to their job and thirty-five or forty-five thousand come in.
Well, that would that would not be downtown. That's, there's not that much employment or population in the metro area, but.
But they're traveling through, I mean, to the hospital, the college, the.
Yeah, there's definitely, definitely in any part of the city, there's a certain amount of people that drive or travel outside of the city for employment and vice versa, people traveling into the city from outlying areas. Don't know what the those numbers are. We can check with our.
If they know it, it might help us understand this whole, because it was my understanding, the courthouse and the hospital and the college and, you know, a lot of those. And again, I hear what you're saying about downtown, but.
A few of the larger employers under the commute trip reduction requirements have that kind of information. So Snohomish County, the city, the P U D would probably be the only ones in downtown that come to mind that are large enough that have that kind of data. Just outside of the downtown, for example, the community college and the hospital would have that that type of information. But it it's done by employer, not by geographic area.
Right, no, I've got you. Thank you. Any other? Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, I guess, I guess that's plenty of feedback, but any questions, Dave, for the commission as far as things to think about on these subjects or transitioning into future subjects?
Well, you know, again, anything comes to mind is you, you know, after the discussion, just, you know, give us a call or send us a note, you know, things, you know, you want us to explore, things like that. So we got, you saw the schedule of what's what's coming up. So any additions, we've got plenty of time to try to incorporate that. Our next coming up subjects, we got, we're going to talk about economic resources, environment, parks and open space, and historic resources at the next meeting. So not the next meeting, but at the September meeting, first meeting in September.
I do have one quick question. We're spending a lot of time on this and getting a lot of great ideas. And I want to say thank you for all the work that you do, especially on this. But there's a lot of other parts here in the city of Everett. We were talking about plans for, you know, North Everett on the college. There's, you know, changes happening around on Everett Mall Way. And so what's, how portable are these ideas? What kind of, how much of the work are we doing now? Can it be recycled and used to other parts, urban villages or sub-downtowns here within the city? Is that, or do we, or when we do those, do we have to start from scratch?
Each area is pretty unique and has has individual unique characteristics that are driving the land use and transportation and economic impacts in in a given area. The college area, the Everett Housing Authority, you know, that whole area. We're kind of waiting at this point on Washington State University. We've been communicating with them from time to time to try and see what their long-term plans are. The housing authority has some long-term plans and we're aware of those. We were going to do a subarea plan. We anticipated starting that, you know, last year. But the college, excuse me, Washington State University is is just focusing on getting their building done and starting that program in the fall. And by the way, while I'm thinking about it, they are having an open house, community open house on August fifteenth. I don't remember the hours, but I can get that information out to you if you are interested for Washington State University. But as far as other areas, the Everett Mall area, we know that there's some transition going on there. As far as doing subarea plans, we probably wouldn't do a subarea plan in the Everett Mall area. We probably just focus on the Everett Mall itself. Some of the other properties are probably, you know, happy with their current land uses and, but, you know, the Everett Mall is definitely because of just a nature of retail, changing nature of retail and the loss of Macy's. And, you know, we don't know what the future holds for that mall. But the property has been on the market. We believe it has been sold. We haven't had any contact with the new buyer. We were talking with some other prospective buyers who had some exciting plans. Unfortunately, that particular developer did not end up acquiring the property. But, you know, those types of things, unless they required some changes to zoning or development standards, wouldn't be coming to the planning commission. It's already an area, Everett Mall, for example, that does allow for high-density housing. And so the probably the only way that it would be coming back for the planning commission review is if they wanted to do some kind of a custom zoning through plan development overlay. For example, if they wanted to go to taller buildings or something like that or higher densities. They do allow pretty high density out there, but, you know, somebody may want to do unlimited density like we do downtown. And so that might generate some code changes or a master planning process. Okay, so anything else on metro? Would you like to collect some public input on any of these topics?
Uh, yes, that is next on our agenda. Is there anybody in the crowd that would like to speak about the metro plan? Step forward, please, state your name and.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Longname. I'm this town fifty years. I remember for the courthouse built in nineteen sixty-seven. And I suggest any building come today and to have parking, log parking. No, and to have water pipes, copper pipes. I live my house built in nineteen hundred. Still, I have driven water from the faucet. I see many times I walk in from here, they deliver water, big bottles for the county, for the court, because the pipes all roasted. We have to look in to have log terms, not for twenty, thirty years terms, hundred years. Because we don't like to leave the herrings, our kids and grandkids behind. When I remember put the courthouse was the top two stories was the jail. Today, how many people we have? We have to look in a hand for everything, for parking, for healthy, for everything. No, say the developers across the, the developers give change, collect the money, say bye-bye, leave thy herrings to us. No, we have to take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no other comments, I, agenda says someone needs to make a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, yeah, 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 yeah. Alan, you had a report, I'm sorry.
Other business, yeah. First, to Commissioner Dunn's question about the opiate code amendment. I don't have a date where that will be coming back, but we do have a little to report on that. Last week, we did have a meeting amongst the Downtown Everett Association, the provider of the current clinic, who is looking to add a second clinic here in the community, and city staff. And talked about a number of concerns and answered a lot of questions, a very productive dialogue for about an hour and a half. As far as when this would be coming back, at this point, we don't have a date selected where we would be bringing the code amendment back. Out of that discussion, they opened up the opportunity, the possibility for a couple of sites that might be on the market just very recently. That would be outside of the immediate downtown area, but still would require a code amendment because there only, our code only allows one clinic or opiate methadone clinic at at this time. So we'd still have to do some work with the commission and council to amend that code. But between the provider and the business community, they're, I think, a better understanding of what the downtown business community is concerned about. And certainly, the provider was very forthcoming in the fact that they do have impacts and, you know, what their practice is at some of their other clinics in Seattle, for example, and Bellevue and Shoreline, a few other places where they do have clinics. And the extent that they go to off-site to try to make sure that their clients are not congregating, for example, at the local Starbucks or creating problems with other retail businesses in the area. But they did acknowledge that they they do have issues with some of their clients. And so those are some issues we need to probably understand a little bit better before we can bring something back. In talking with the mayor previously, his thought was to also look at the issue of social services within the downtown, in a larger issue, not just the methadone clinic. We have a lot of different social services and that's something that we may be opening up a little bit more. And before we're done with metro is just the role of social service providers in downtown and how that affects the potential for attracting the type of development that we're we're hoping to attract, you know, and the amount of development, both in population and job growth. So we've got a lot more work to do in that respect. But I don't have a date by which we will bring a code amendment back. Part of that may hinge on progress in discussions between T H S and city staff and some of the opportunities that maybe we just became aware of in in the discussion last week. So that's the first item, unless there's any more questions on that one. The second item was in response to Commissioner Jordanson's question about design review board. And we had a good conversation last week about that. I I think what we would prefer to do, I don't have a lot of information to share with you tonight, but perhaps when we get into the urban design element of the metro plan would be to talk about how to encourage design in addition to our codes. You know, what processes would work well and do some research and what other communities use. A lot of communities do use citizen committees or expert committees of architects and designers in in some of their design review processes. A lot of communities use a staff-administered process. And so we don't know that we've got a perfect model, but we'll bring back some more information.
Just to comment on that, as part of the reason I'm interested in that is because I've been working with a lot of jurisdictions. And I've found that the cities that are experiencing this phenomenal growth and prosperity, like Bellevue and Seattle, and to some extent Tacoma and some of the other cities, they appear to have, they all appear to have design review boards in place to apply the standards consistently. And, you know, just take a sort of a, an objective look at what is being proposed in terms of development, not just commercial or residential, but any development, including, you know, agent, public agencies. And I have, you know, I guess the argument has been that, well, gee, you know, the developers won't like it or the builders won't like it. It's just time and expense that's added to the process. And but, you know, the the cities that are, like I said, experiencing this phenomenal prosperity, they all had them, you know, they've all had them. Even before the downturn, they had them and they continue to have them through the downturn. And now, you know, the 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 growth is rebounding exponentially and they have, you know, they all have these design review boards in place that I suspect, and I can't prove this, but I suspect that not having one, the residual effect is that we have sort of a more, less, less, higher, we don't have as high a standards. And although there are some good projects, there are also some very mediocre projects. So, you know, you're going to see a lot more, you know, cheap siding and vinyl windows. And I'd like to see if there isn't some some way that we could maybe raise the bar a little bit and maybe go a step beyond what we, you know, just meeting the requirements. So that's on that, on that whole thing. And I'd like to hear what some of the other planning commissioners might have to say about it. And and we're talking about applying historical standards, green standards, design standards, you know, pedestrian, you know, bike path, you know, all the things that make a a community, give it a sense of identity and place, you know, and enhance, you know, actually make it a much more attractive place for developers to come in and build, you know, high-density housing and this type of thing.
You think it would be, you're talking about more consistency across the whole.
Consistent application of the standards, yeah.
So that it's more of a whole than just a project here and a project there and.
Well, they can only, you know, they can only go as the projects come, you know. It's it's not something, you know, as the as the projects come about, then then they get a, they get assessed on individually as they as they come through the pipe.
I'd be interested in learning a lot more, but it sounds, it sounds like an opportunity to help with place making, which is key and critical for economic development.
I would support looking at it, too.
I agree. I think it sounds like a good idea to look into. I I didn't, my question is whether or not it's aesthetics and design or includes the green standard. So I like that it would be hopefully included. that it would be, hopefully include energy efficiency and standards around.
Hopefully everything.
That'd be great, yeah. Thank you.
Hey, we'll bring back more information.
Alan, um, my question is, um, I've had a couple folks approach me, and one of them is actually putting a package together and performing on Baker Heights, when, when will that come forward to us?
It may not, uh, just depends on, um-
They-
If the use that, uh, once the Housing Authority surpluses that property, uh, if the buyer wants to do something that's allowed by the current zoning, unless there's, uh, again, kind of like the conversation with the Everett Mall, if they need to modify some development standards or change some zoning around, then it would probably come, it would come to the planning commission, but if it's allowed by the current, uh, development standards of the zoning, then it would not-
Okay, thank you. Now I would look for a motion.
Second.
Thank you all for being here on this, uh, warm election night and, uh, going through phase three of the metro plan.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.